Bring the Stigler Board of Education regular meeting on Monday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty at seven P. M. A meeting to order. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. This time we move on to the pledge and pledge allegiance in prayer. And the Stigler Ministerial Alliance member Jeff Parker of the Ninth Street Baptist Church.
I plead solemnly in the name of the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me open us in prayer. Dear Lord, just thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and represent our community here. And God, we just pray that your wisdom and your courage would be there in their hearts and that you would just lead them as you would have them to best steward this community and our schools for the best of our community and our children here, God. We thank you so much for this opportunity. Anything I pray? Amen.
Thank you so very much. You don't have to stay if you don't want to.
Oh, I'm interested. I want to say.
But you may, yes. Okay, this time we move on to the approval of the minutes from the August tenth, twenty twenty meeting. Any questions, answers, comments, changes?
I didn't say anything. Make motion to approve minutes.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the minutes from the August tenth, twenty twenty meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Um, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time I move on to the approval of encumbrances.
Okay, we have, you see them there? I'll go over a few. Up at the top, we have P. O. one eighty-five, one eighty-six. Those are Walmart and school specialty. Those are after-school program. Uh, one eighty-seven, Amazon. That's P. P. E. Supplies. That we bought five, I'm sorry, a total of seven foggers to fog rooms with, uh, five plug-in and two cordless. And the two cordless do the buses. Uh, one eighty-nine, uh, this is, we have a deal with the speech and the music band program, those two departments. Where, uh, in two separate P. Os, we have lighting for the high school auditorium and the stage. If you've been in there last year doing plays and things, there were some of those fixtures on the stage that just wouldn't work anymore. And so, uh, they're, they're taking care about twenty-seven hundred, I think, uh, for sound improvements in auditorium. And this takes care. And we should update that as far as needed to be for several years. And we have a premier band program and speech programs, so try to take care of that.
Did you say it's for sound too, or just lighting?
Uh, the, the speech and band are going in together and they're funding the additional sound.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, about twenty-seven hundred on their part.
Okay.
Um, if we go on down to, uh, one ninety-four is just under nine thousand dollars. That's part of the incentive grant. That's, uh, three hundred Chromebook chargers. Um, for high school, middle school, if they're stored in those cabinets, then we don't want to be taking those chargers in and out every night. So they can have one at home when they need it, one, one at school in that cabinet to charge those, uh, devices. Uh, one ninety-six and one ninety-seven, those are ag supplies. Uh, on down to two oh-two, J. E. Systems. This is to, um, we've not had a voicemail system in our phone system. And this, uh, for instance, here, Lindy just answers it and directs it. And that will free her up and the high school, I mean, the building sites, uh, to give that initial contact. And then voicemail, if we need to send it to a teacher or someone else. So that's, uh, that one to J. E. Uh, school nurse supply. This is equipment bought with special ed monies. Uh, the A. C. T. two oh-four and two oh-five, uh, for the seniors, they didn't get to test with the A. C. T. last year because of the, uh, being out of school. So we're testing them in October. And then we went ahead and did the, uh, encumbered the money to do the sophomore testing in the spring. And, uh, both of these are done through our reading grant proceeds. Uh, two oh-six, seventeen hundred dollars. These are eight additional ports at the grade school and four additional ports at the administration office that will actually serve, uh, the pre-K and K. And this gives extensions to those classrooms where they can communicate outside the classroom. Um, Hawthorne Educational Services. This is, uh, testing materials for special ed testing. Uh, two eleven, Verizon. As you know, if, uh, if a student, virtual or distance learning does not have that capability at home, we have to provide that just like any other student if we can. Uh, this is the purchase through grant of twenty-five hotspots, uh, in order so those kids can have access at home. Uh, well, I don't know if it's on the second page for you. Uh, P. O. two fourteen, that's, uh, Alpha Plus. That's a, a math, uh, supplement for fifth grade. And then, uh, the bottom one, two seventeen, Amazon. That's, uh, books bought with grade school library money. Uh, child nutrition, uh, the main purchase there, uh, the top one, number, uh, P. O. eighteen, this is an additional fingerprint machine for the grade school. And then we had no expenditures out of the building fund.
You're on to me. You got all my questions in advance.
Did I?
Yep.
It's been a few meetings now.
Make a motion. We approve the encumbrances?
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the encumbrances listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. We move on to other financial reports.
Okay, we'll pass these around. We'll go over.
Thank you.
We'll go over that one in just a second.
Looks like there's a staple in it.
Yeah, I thought for a minute there was only four. First of all, uh, we started out the month with, uh, in the general fund with two million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, receipts of six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, uh, total cash, two million, nine hundred and one dollars, eight hundred and, two million, nine hundred and one thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. Eight hundred and seventy-four thousand in warrants, so an ending balance of two million, twenty-seven thousand dollars. If you go down to the bottom, I'm on here, I'm sorry. I just passed that out again.
I was looking at him. Let's see if he has time on it.
If you go down to the bottom, uh, that two million, twenty-seven thousand dollars total cash, less outstanding warrants at this time of two hundred and thirty thousand. So, uh, total monies with those outstanding warrants at this time in the general fund, one million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and nine and fourteen cents. Uh, building fund, we've not spent anything out of the building fund so far this year, so it stands with the balance of, had some receipts at the top, one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. And that's, uh, a general fund interest from last year. And then that right now, eight hundred and one thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars in the general fund. Uh, we ended with a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nineteen in child nutrition. And then, uh, sinking funds still remains with a small amount in it, and then gifts. Now, where I mixed you up, uh, the one I passed out, and I told you last time that we would give you this each month. If you look at the top, that's dealing with payroll, and you can see that so far this year in July and August, and we feel like that should be close. In July, we were, we spent a little over fourteen thousand dollars less this year than we did last July. Uh, in August, we spent about a two dollars less than twelve thousand less this year in August than we did last time for a total of twenty-six thousand, four hundred dollars this year, less on payroll than last year. Um, down at the bottom, we've had this conversation that that's going to look ugly for a little while because we're buying a lot of grant, uh, uh, thing, things that we're buying through grants for the next couple of months. So this year on vendors, uh, we spent in August, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars as compared to a hundred and forty-one last year for a difference of a hundred and eighty-five, four seventy-six. And on vendors, we've spent two hundred and two thousand more this year so far than we did last year. Overall, with payroll and, and vendors, we are over a hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars at this point. Uh, we'll see that again. You saw with encumbrance, buying some, a lot of items through those grant proceeds, uh, in our encumbrances this month, so we should have another month, uh, with that.
I guess the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The July, like, just in the July expenses, I assume that's because school's not in sessions, weighed so much less than August.
Right. On vendors.
Well, I'm just looking right here. There's a hundred and twenty-one thousand for July, and then August it goes to six hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Right, because all your teachers, a lot of your teachers get paid in May, and that ends the, the year. That July is only twelve-month employees.
Okay.
So your ten-month employees, or they don't have payroll during that.
Okay.
Um, some of the things that made that on the vendors, uh, we had fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars in COVID-related grants. That's our incentive grant. Uh, through the COVID response, uh, that was spent, that was paid for in that. We, we didn't buy any text, or let me say this, we ordered, we didn't pay for any textbooks in the last physical year. Uh, we're, we're called on by law, uh, to spend that money. We ordered them, but they're coming out of this year's funding. So, uh, the textbooks we purchased in August were forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Um, we had a, uh, if you'll remember about three years ago, we purchased all new L. E. D. Lighting through all the buildings. Uh, we were just talking about a week and a half ago, and that, that loaned is paid off in May. So we decided to go ahead and pay it off and save about eighteen hundred dollars worth of interest, uh, by going ahead and paying that off. The remainder of that was that L. E. D. Lighting was fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's all in one chunk in August. And then, um, the first payment on our L. E. D. Sign that, if you'll remember, was bought in last physical year, uh, that's, that is in. It's sitting in the shop, uh, waiting, and then when it's installed, we'll have another ten thousand and something to pay on that.
Are we talking about the one down there on Main?
That'll go down on Main Street, yes.
Shouldn't our, I know we've, we've got a bunch of COVID money in, right?
Right, fifty-nine thousand.
We're at a million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand on our general fund. Shouldn't that number reflect that coming in so it wouldn't show? It should be, that million, seven hundred thou, eight hundred thousand is normally what we carry over every month, correct? Close to it. So that should, shouldn't our COVID money be on top of that, or?
It is, but we haven't received it yet.
Okay, so when we get it in, all these numbers will turn around?
Correct.
Okay.
And as we spend it, we'll do a claim on that money.
Okay.
And then we'll get it.
Okay.
Right.
How much, I know that, I know this has already been, you've already said this, but how, how much is the COVID grant?
Well, we have, uh, we have one, the CARES Act, three hundred and fifty-three million, and we've just, for funding purposes, split it in half. No, I wish. Three hundred and fifty-three thousand. Wishful thinking. Don't put that in the paper.
We got to rock them up.
Yeah, we're good. But it's three hundred and fifty-three thousand, and, and in all of our stuff, we just divided it into two because we're gonna, we're gonna have a challenge next year also. So we, we've got half of it, we're putting into the budget this year, and then half for next year.
And I guess, assuming you can do that, because they put pretty strict timelines on where you have to spend it.
September of twenty-two.
Okay.
So we'll have into that following year just a little bit. And then we had the hundred and ninety-eight thousand. A lot of what you saw in encumbrances and these expenditures, because we, we've not spent a dime of CARES Act money yet. Um, this is all coming out of that other incentive grant, that hundred and ninety-eight thousand, uh, incentive grant that went along with the CARES Act, is what, what you've seen so far.
So you've still got three hundred and some thousand dollars to, I guess, bill out and do your stuff on it.
Right.
Did we ever find out anything about the mobile hotspots that we could get through the CARES Act money that the state was giving out?
We, we received, uh, a group of twenty-five. We, and those went out to virtual students. And, uh, then you just saw from Verizon, we just purchased twenty-five more. And it's, uh, on this one, they're forty dollars each, and then ten dollars a month on.
Do we need more?
Yeah.
We do.
We're, we're hoping it levels off because we had that, August twenty-fourth was the date when we really wanted virtual up and running. And it was the few days before that, they started coming in and grabbing them. But, uh, we had Mike Huggins really vetting those and making sure that that's truly a need, uh, before we handle that.
It seems cheap for me. I don't, I don't deal with that much, but it's ten dollars a month.
It is. If you don't have to buy many of them, and then.
You were right.
Okay, everybody good? Financials? Okay, this time we move on to public comment. Board of Education invites public comment at this point in a regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B. E. D. dash R. No one present for that. Information items superintendent's report.
Okay, we've got, uh, just some things going on right now. We have our ag department, and they're having their county show tonight and tomorrow night, uh, at the fairgrounds. Uh, just activities going on. High school football team, three and O. And by the way, we'll be putting this out in the next couple of days. We have a bye week this week, and we just filled it today with Bigs Beat J. V. And I told them, hey, if, if we're gonna do it, have them come to our place. That'll give us a sixth home game, another gate. So, uh, and we kind of look at, uh, uh, we lost Talaquasacoya. We already had an open date. And we're not betting on Tulsa Webster in the Tulsa schools and kind of what's going on there right now. So we had this opportunity, so we'll have a, a home game this Friday night where we did have that open date. So we're kind of looking forward to that.
Yeah, how does that work? Is it a forfeit from the other team, or is it just off your schedule, and, or how is that?
Well, the only one, uh, was Talaquasacoya. They just canceled. And on the district game, it would be a forfeit because you have to have a win and loss there. Um, high school softball, eight and five. Uh, you follow tournament champions, uh, about a week, week and a half ago. First band contest, uh, coming up the twenty-sixth of September. They're kind of, uh, changing the way they're doing their band contest. And they'll go in just like they do on their regional contest, and they'll perform, load back on the buses, and come home. So they don't have too much congregating at those arenas. Regional cheer competition has been postponed until, I believe it's January the ninth, and so that's a lot later. It's usually toward the middle to end of September. Uh, after-school program, uh, we started this year. It's running about eighty to ninety each day. Um, our Stigler Virtual Academy right now, we have, uh, thirty-eight grade school students enrode. Uh, middle school has twenty-seven, and high school has fifty-three. Uh, a little COVID update, we were talking about earlier. Right now, we have on quarantine, we have grade school, we have five students and one teacher. Middle school, we have seven students and one teacher. And then high school, six students. Seems like every site has to have at least one teacher. So, uh, I think that's encouraging, and we've been able to keep that steady and, and keep having schools, so we're, we're proud of that point at, at this time. So, so continuing for.
Okay. Comments? Questions? Good? Okay, this time we move on to action topic A, consideration, uh, textbook committee for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
Okay, this is just, uh, typical. Uh, it's science adoption year. It's, uh, generally an expensive year. But, uh, we're looking at, with all of our technology, just buying, for the most part, uh, classroom sets of textbooks this year, and that'll be a huge savings. So, uh, but that, we, uh, Mr. Gilmore took over my spot on that textbook committee, and then you see the others that are on that committee.
Make a motion and approve textbook committee for twenty-twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to accept the textbook committee for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of the district gifted talented education plan for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
And if you read the gifted and talented plan, it's the same as what we've had the last few years. And basically what it comes down to, uh, any student that scores in the top three percent on, uh, the COGAD or another I. Q. Test is deemed gifted and talented. And then your school district, which is the bulk of that plan, can come up with other areas that a student can be deemed gifted and talented. Now, in that, it's either, excuse me, it's either six or eight percent. Uh, there's a cap on how many students can be termed gifted and talented in that arena. And, uh, kind of six to eight percent, uh, cap on that. So, uh, that's basically when it comes down to it, what's included in your gifted and talented plan.
Make a motion. We approve the twenty-twenty-one gifted and talented plan.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the district gifted and talented education plan for the twenty-twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of the district gifted talented advisory committee for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
And just the, uh, committee put together to review that gifted and talented plan each year to make any, uh, additions, subtractions, or to edit that in any way.
Make a motion. We accept the gifted and talented advisory committee for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to accept the district gifted talented advisory committee for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of the estimate of needs for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
Okay, as, as most of you know, this is basically our auditors put this estimate of needs together, and they, they give us a temporary one back in the summer. But this is the official, and this is basically up at the top what we carried over, uh, as of June thirtieth. And down the left side, uh, the revenues. Um, if you look under, sorry, some of this, I have to have my glasses, general fund. And if you look, for instance, balance to raise from ad valorem tax, that, that line item right there and the estimated miscellaneous down below. These are all estimated on a percentage basis. Um, I believe the ad valorem is gonna be either ninety-three or ninety-six percent that they allow you to estimate, that they estimate off of what you accumulated last year. And then most of these estimated miscellaneous are estimated off of ninety percent of proceeds last year. Uh, those state aid, uh, thirty-two hundred, thirty-three hundred, and so on, those are actual figures that we know. But those up above it, those are calculated off of ninety percent estimation of what we brought in last year. And so, uh, we will use this estimate of needs, uh, then to build our budget over the course of the next month, and we'll bring that to you.
Okay, that was, that's my question. So we, we, our estimated revenue is nine point two million, but we don't have our estimated expenses yet. Is that, or do, or am I missing something?
If you'll, you'll take that nine point two million you just stated and look up in general fund, balance to raise from ad valorem tax, one point two million. Okay, that will be added to this down here because we don't have that ad valorem tax yet. They're estimating, uh, they're estimating it to come in at one point two million. So what that will do, and you'll see on our budget next month, we're gonna look at proceeds somewhere in the ballpark. It'll actually be a little more than last year. But, but there's a lot of it, as you've seen, earmarked on those grants. You have, you have to spend a hundred percent. But, uh, where last year, I think, our total revenue.
That's your expenses.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That twelve point six at the top is what we're authorized to spend this year.
We don't want to hit that, but that's what we're.
Well, that's what I like, so we're wanting to spend twelve point six, but we're only estimating nine point two. That's not working out there, is it?
Yeah.
Add the one, one, two, three to that though, or ad valorem.
Oh, okay.
Place that nine.
Okay.
If you add those together, we're gonna end up, uh, bringing in hopefully about ten point four. Yeah, last year was in the ten point three something range.
Okay.
So estimate of needs.
Make a motion and approve the estimate of needs for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the estimate of needs for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of approval of adoption or revision of following policies. Number one, revision, records investigation, D. A. B. B. Number two, revision, leave policy, full-time employees, D. E. C. Number three, adoption, extracurricular activities, emergency medical services, F. M. A. A.
Okay, the records investigation, uh, policy is pretty simple in that, uh, a few years ago, they started policy, everyone had to have a background check and fingerprint it. But people like me didn't have to, that have been in forever. So, um, what this does is on school teachers, the ones that haven't had that done, uh, that have been in the system for a while, they're next. The next time, we have to have our certificate renewed every five years. The next time they renew, they'll have to have a background check. And then support personnel, we have until twenty-twenty, I think it's July twenty-twenty-two, to get a background check on all those that have been in the system a long time. So that's basically the update. You'll look on that underlying part, and that's the change portion.
So do you do ongoing background checks as, I mean, is that? So do you do ongoing background checks as, I mean, is that a periodic deal? Or is it just a one-time thing and it's over or?
Not for your, just your classroom, your bus drivers, people like that. But not teachers, once they're employed, they have it and then they're done.
Okay. Make a motion to revise, revise the.
We need to do all of these together. We need to do all three of those together. Let's just wait on all three of them.
Leave policy, back in March, when we had the pandemic start and you know the, the extended leave, COVID leave that's available for workers, we didn't get that put into our policy. Now it expires December thirty-first, so, but we were advised to go ahead and get that put in. And then along with that policy in the back is the, the form that, that we'll use retroactively for the ones that have already been on quarantine. But will be the form they fill out if they need to take that, take advantage of that eighty hours.
Do you think you need to spell out that it's only effective through December thirty-first of twenty twenty on there or not?
Down here on the bottom.
It is.
It's right here.
Yeah, it's in, at the bottom of the first.
Highlighted.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
And then.
Good question.
The extracurricular activities, emergency medical services, that's very short. But what that is, is the Riley Boatright Act. Riley was a young man, I believe played football and was hurt. There wasn't medical services on the premises. And they, they give that credit for him passing away. So that's why that and that, this policy just says that every school has to have a plan in place. And we have that available, that plan. But the policy is just short and sweet saying that we have that plan in place. That's the Riley Boatright Act.
And that's normally just ambulance on the side during activities or?
And then in here, it talks about the head coach is in charge and what, what the role of the assistant coach in those and, and communication with, with emergency services.
It seems like there was something come up about that during a softball game over at Podo or something about some, there was an issue with the girl getting hurt or something.
Back in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And I just remember something about it. I don't remember a whole lot about it, but I do remember that.
Right, she hurt her ankle or pretty bad, right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay, now we have a vote.
Make a motion, we approve all policies revised and adopted.
I'll say. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to adopt and approve the revisions of the following policies. Number one, revision, records investigation, D A B B. Number two, revision, leave policy, full-time employees, D E C. Number three, adoption, extracurricular activities, emergency medical services, F M A A A. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic E, consideration of approval of the ACT as the intended choice as a locally selected nationally recognized C C R A state assessment in place of the S A T.
And nationally, the S A T is probably more prominent on the two coasts. In the interior of the country, it's the ACT. If you're gonna use the ACT, then you have to have board approval that we're gonna use the ACT instead of the S A T.
Make a motion to approve the ACT over the S A T.
I'll say. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the ACT as the intended choice as a locally selected nationally recognized C C R A state assessment in place of the S A T. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
On that one, just, sorry, just out of curiosity, is it really, I mean, I assume you wanna pick the ones that's in the region. So you're comparing apples to apples, is that kind of the?
Correct. What, what your colleges in this area recognize more frequently.
And it's all ACT and, which, I mean, that's all it's, all I've ever known.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, action topic G, consideration of approval of the deregulation application for high school alternative education due to abbreviated day alternative education for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And you may remember this yearly, we had to get a dereg for, because we only had four-day alt ed program at night. This one is because, if you remember, we took that to virtual. So that's a dereg to allow that alternative ed class to be virtual is what we're asking for there. And it has to be board approved. Then we turn that into the State Department for approval by October first.
It doesn't say that, that it, for the virtual, it just says we're deregulating it. Is that?
But that's superstitious high school.
In your attachment?
Well, I've seen on the attachment, but in the, on the school.
Oh, on the statement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you're just.
Approve it as the virtual or approve it that you got it listed here?
This doesn't say anything about virtual on the attachment at all.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the attachment in the plan, it spells that out.
Um, in this one?
Uh-huh, in.
It said at the Stigler Virtual Academy.
Mm-hmm.
Are you looking at this one, Kenny?
Okay, I would, yeah, I would, okay.
But I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And in the motion, it doesn't say.
In the motion.
Right.
Oh, you're looking on the agenda.
Virtual or internal?
Should it or does it matter or we deregulate it for whatever or does it?
Well, you're, you're approving the dereg application. So I think we're okay. I think on that statement, I think it's probably in there the way it was last year, don't you?
And this is from the, the Board of Education too. I mean, it doesn't say anything in here, but in the, in the application, it does.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is from the state too, right?
That's to the state?
Yeah.
Right.
Make a motion to approve the deregulation application for high school alternative education.
I'll say.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to approve the deregulation application for the high school alternative ed education due to abbreviated day alter, alternative education for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic H, consideration of approval of bid for Promethean boards from the, from the S T S education.
Okay, and Promethean boards are kind of the next generation, what we call the smart board, which was projected. These are basically look like a TV here and it has sensors on all four corners. And then it's interactive, so like a smart board, you're able to manipulate it. And it's a lot better use in the classroom and that's kind of the next generation. So instead of using the last part of our reading grant for other things, we're gonna start trying to, we're gonna use what's left of that to start equipping classrooms with Promethean boards.
So it's a smarter smart board?
Exactly.
As you said before, what was the smart boards cost to, we about those?
They were, you buy the, the projector and smart board you're talking about, probably forty-five hundred, five thousand dollars initially.
So these are half the cost or less?
Well, Mike, Mike's getting these about eighteen hundred dollars.
And you're getting nineteen of them, I guess, from this?
Right. Thirteen thousand dollars of that's coming out of six seventeen, that's special ed fund. And then the remaining twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one is coming out of that reading grant that we're finishing up this year.
Well, we're replacing them with these?
We're pretty much replacing the, the old smart boards that are going out with these Promethean.
Great school?
Oh, boy, they're, they're spread out, grade school and middle school, I'm not sure about the camp.
And we'll surplus the old ones or?
We'll surplus, if we can, the smart boards.
We're still using them though, aren't the ones that?
Some of the smart boards are, and this projector may still work and that smart board may still work. But as they go out, this is kind of what we like to replace them with. And with these, you don't have to turn the lights out. You know, with a smart board, a lot of times during, you've got to turn the lights out to be able to see that image.
Because of the projector.
Yeah, it's projection.
Make a motion, we approve the bid for Promethean boards for S T S education.
I'll say. Motion made by Brett, seconded by Jennifer to approve the bids for the Promethean boards from S T S education. Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration of approval of utilizing public surplus, surplus company for the sale of school surplus property.
And this is a company and it's actually called Public Surplus that Mike Huggins, I don't know, he used, Comissue Technology Center used to take care of their surplus. So, and one great point was when we take a computer out of service in the past, we've set it back here for five years, it sets back here and depreciates more. He said, as soon as we take anything, we, that bus and whatever, go ahead, we can surplus it with them. It's basically an online, they take the bid, we have no out-of-pocket expense. There's a ten point five percent commission on the top of the selling price, as you can kind of see. And, and then it's, they pay out on a net thirty basis, so we should get our money within thirty days.
And what, and does that, what all, what also, anything surplus?
Anything.
I mean, vehicles, computer to?
On, online garage sale, I mean, just all kinds of.
Is this a contract that we're in for?
No.
For just?
You just register and you're ready to go.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve utilizing public surplus company for the sale of school surplus property. I'll say.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David to approve utilizing, approve, utilizing public surplus company for the sale of school surplus property. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to executive session A, proposed executive session to discuss an act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statute three oh seven B one of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of revision of virtual school instructor pay scale for the twenty twenty-one school year. And number two, discussion of approval of virtual school instructor, instructor contract addendums for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Make a motion, we convene an executive session.
I'll say. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to convene an executive session at seven forty-two P M. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Ready? Kenny and who else?
Me. David.
Huggins, Paul Huggins.
Eight oh, what, what do you have on here? I turned mine off finally. It's, mine is not working at all, so.
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David at eight oh two P M to return the board to open session. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Those present during executive session were Brett Warren, David Huggins, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Superintendent David Morgan was also present. No votes were taken, nor motions were made.
Make a motion, we accept the revised virtual school instructor pay scale for twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll say. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the revised virtual school instructor pay scale for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion, we accept the virtual school instructor contract amendments for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll say. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the virtual school instructor contract addendums for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. New business?
We do have two items, new business. Cody Dawson, Mr. Dawson had requested Friday and it's in September, so we needed to put it under new business. F F A cattle grading contest out of state because they're having trouble finding places to have enough. And this is in Coffeyville, Kansas, just over the border. He said it's about two and a half hours. September the twenty-fifth, approximately eighteen to twenty students competing. We will leave in the morning, they will, and return that afternoon. So he's requesting to take, go across state lines, so we need to approve that or?
Will they take a bus or was that?
Yeah, they'll either, right, they'll take.
Eighteen, okay.
Short bus.
Big.
Bigger one. Make a motion for that.
I make a motion that we allow F F A to compete in the cattle judging contest on September twenty fifth. Cattle, I mean, was Coffeyville?
Mm-hmm.
Coffeyville.
Coffeyville, Kansas.
Good memory, I'll say.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to allow the F F A to take a bus to Coffeyville, Kansas on September twenty-fifth for livestock judging, someone was.
Mm-hmm.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Uh, did I say September twenty-fifth? Okay, Jennifer, David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, we have a resignation. Says, I, Jeanette Lamb hereby resign my position as encumbrance clerk slash federal programs for Stigler Public Schools effective October thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And signed and then spot two witnesses. I think that's Tom. So.
And what else, what else was it? John Clark and what else?
Federal programs. Then we'll need to advertise. And she's gonna stay till then to train, so.
Make a motion, we accept the resignation of Jeanette Lamb from encumbrance clerk and federal programs director, October thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
It's just federal programs.
Encumbrance clerk.
Federal programs.
God bless you.
I'll say.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to accept the resignation of Jeanette Lamb effective October third. And encumbrance clerk and federal, federal programs.
Federal, thirtieth.
Thirtieth, oh, okay. Thirtieth, okay.
We need her longer than her.
Third, okay. Uh, David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay, is that it?
I make a motion, we adjourn. A third.
Jennifer? Um.
Do a fourth.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to adjourn at eight oh, or eight? Eight oh six P M. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Next regular meeting, October twelfth, twenty twenty.